Okay, so this is it. The moment we have all been waiting for. Round one of the At-Large Candidate Debates. We are here at Heather Gardens. This is ground zero for politics in Arapahoe County, Colorado. Aurora, Colorado. This is the Ohio of Arapahoe County. As what David Lighttowler, an activist in Arapahoe County, likes to say, "This is the Ohio of Arapahoe County." This is a very affluent, wealthy retirement community that has a lot of influence. These are where--this is where politicians go to die. This is where politicians go to start their legacy. So let's go inside, check out the venue. We'll be showing the whole candidate forum for you. And the candidates involved, Allison Coombs, the council member for the city council, will be hosting. It's actually technically her town hall, but it will be a candidate forum. And the three candidates that are here, I believe, are Becky Hogan, Adam Fung, and John Ronquio. See you inside.
I had--I only have a minute, so this is gonna go really quickly. My name is Becky Hogan, and I'm running for Aurora City Council at large. Nineteen years ago, I met a man that you may know by Mayor Stephen Hogan. And I fell in love with that man. And he came with a very, very large family. He came with the whole city of Aurora, of which I fell in love with them also. And I will tell you, when I lost my husband, the city, the whole Aurora community, surrounded me with love. And I'm not sure how I ever could pay that debt back. I'm an economic development professional by trade. I work with cities, and I've worked for cities for over three decades. I bring jobs, I retain jobs, and I work on land development for our community. I have three priorities for my service on city council. Community safety, transportation and economic development, and restorancibility on our city council. I believe in collaboration, finding common ground between community, business, and government. I'm Becky Hogan, and I will be asking for your vote on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky, and thank you again for joining us this evening. And now I'll introduce John Ronquio, candidate for Aurora City Council at large.
Good evening, everybody. It's great to be here with you again. My name is John Ronquio. I am another candidate for Aurora City Council at large, which refers to the whole city and not my stature as I moved out of the way for Becky to speak. So I love Aurora. This community has been the biggest source of stability for me and my family. I'm married, I have two young sons who attend schools in Cherry Creek Public School District. And for us, this is home. This is our forever home. And it's a place that has offered us a whole lot of opportunity that I don't think we would've had in many other parts of the Denver metro. It's affordability, it's open spaces, it's welcoming atmosphere, and the people who live here. Like Becky, I have several different areas that I want to focus on. The first of those is economic opportunity. Aurora is poised to become one of the economic anchors of the state. We have the ability to grow, and I hope we do so in smart ways. By doing that, I also want us to be able to-- excuse me-- also want us to be able to promote that economic opportunity from top to bottom. Businesses to relocate here, to pay people what they're worth, and to make sure that people are safe and secure in their homes, in their work, and in the community. This leads to my next pillar, which is restoring everything we can do to make sure that we trust the public safety agencies that have been entrusted to take care of us and protect us. I don't think it's lost on anybody today. There was a big announcement from Attorney General Phil Weiser. There are wounds on this community that have been reopened from time to time. We have to do everything we can because everybody deserves to be safe in the city. The last thing that I want to mention is that as we move forward with our growth, we have to build a smart infrastructure. We have to grow in ways that not only bring about economic opportunity, but we need to reinvest and revitalize the original neighborhoods in Aurora. There are opportunities there to build up small businesses along special districts like the Havana Business Corridor, the Aurora Cultural Arts District. But we need to do so in a way that sets a really good foundation for our future. But none of these can come about if we don't engage with some very serious administrative reform in City Hall. Aurora is a big city with big city issues, and I think it's time for us to confront those issues with a big-city vision, with nimbleness, innovativeness, and responsiveness to our residents of Aurora. So again, my name is John Ronquio, running for one of the two open at-large seats. And I also appreciate your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you both. So as you can all see, we have some really thoughtful and qualified individuals running for this council. And I have some additional questions for them to get us started. And I think you both mentioned this, so I'd like you to elaborate on your vision for public safety in the city of Aurora and how we balance the need for police accountability, which has been central to our conversation, with addressing crime, which has also been central to our conversations as a city. So, John, if you'd like to go first?
Incredibly important question. I don't think it's lost on anybody that there is a concern about public safety in the city. There's good and there's bad. There is a rise in certain crimes, certain violent crimes, property crimes. However, from this point last year, our murder rate is down 33%. That comes directly from the statistical report from APD. As I mentioned in my opening comments, when I say that everybody deserves to be safe, I mean that. And that means that we need to build robust police department and fire and rescue who uphold the oaths to protect us. What happened today with the announcement of 32 counts, indictments from a grand jury, is a mechanism for accountability and a mechanism for justice. I firmly believe that. But that doesn't mean that we can't support our police where they need it. That doesn't mean that we can't support our fire and rescue where they need it. I've been endorsed by the IAFF Union of Firefighters. I believe that we need to do everything we can to protect their pensions and to support them where we can. But it's not a zero-sum game. Where there are, in fact, bad apples, they do need to be rooted out. We also had a policing report that came out recently that showed that a very select number of officers are responsible for a relatively significant amount of grievances that have been filed against APD. I don't think that it has to be one or the other. I think that we can address what needs to be addressed to ensure that all of us feel safe living in Aurora. But we can't ignore the crime. I'm sure many of you have also heard about thefts of catalytic converters. I'm sure many of you have heard about the drag racing. We have to confront those. And I applaud the current members of council for addressing those head-on. We need to do them. And that's one of the things that I would praise them on. I think Becky and I both want to see some stability restored to the days. But I do think that around some of these important issues, we are seeing some unity. And we do that because we recognize the importance it is for our residents of Aurora. So I'll stop there. Allison, was there a time limit just to--
Um, no.
I just wanted to be within bounds, so--
You were within the original bounds, but if you had more, you can add more.
Gotcha. All right, I'm good.
Okay.
A lot of people like to polarize where we are. You're either on the far right or on the far left. Really, in what I want to say in my heart is, yes, I agree with John. We're not so far apart, he and I, in this race. For me, regarding policing, the city of Aurora mandates a two per thousand-- that means two officers per thousand people. And we're falling short of that right now. We need to do-- we need to look at our baseline and see, are we recruiting the best officers? Because we deserve that in our community. Are we providing the funding? Are we providing the benefit package to compete in the metropolitan area for our Aurora's finest, if you will, for police and fire, as well as ambulance services? Living in Heather Gardens, I'm very, very mindful to medical care in our community and for our community. I'm very mindful of the safety aspects within our community. We need to do a better job working together in giving both physical benefits, if you will, financial and beneficial. But we also need to support our first responders. We can't give them tasks that are impossible for them to do. We need to champion them. We need to let them know that they are appreciated. You know yourselves how important that that is. And that's something that I believe that we can do a much better job at as a community, as individuals. Again, I do agree with John with much of what he has said. And I hope that you do too.
Thank you both again, and I'll put this down. So the other question that I have is with respect to cost of living. So in the city of Aurora, housing prices in particular have become very high. And so I would like you to share what you think the steps are that we can take as a city council to ensure that housing is affordable so that our residents can thrive economically and be contributing to our tax base instead of paying half of their income on housing. So Becky, you can go first on this one.
I actually love this question because I do think there are very specific things that we can do related to making housing affordable again. Number one, we need to streamline a development process so that more inventory comes online for people to be able to purchase homes. When there's two, three, four, six homes, it creates a vacuum. And we need to improve our process so that we have a greater inventory. The second we need to do as a city, looking at council policy, is take a look at what fees that we are assessing to homes. One of the most expensive costs of housing are permitting fees, construction use tax, water tax fees, development fees, park plan fees. You would be surprised how much of a home is developed out of these fees. And we can take a look at that and streamline some of those fees. We can compartmentalize some of these fees. We may be able to incentivize some of these fees. But that will bring down the cost of housing. I have a 44-year-old daughter, and she is looking to buy her first home here. And she's looked in the Denver metropolitan area, she's looked out of state. And she says, "Mom, we just can't find something that we can afford." And I said to her, I said, "Megan, honey, you can live wherever you want to, but you're not taking my granddaughter with you." Is there a problem? Yes, there is. Does it affect us? Yes, it does, and it may affect your family as well. So let's work together to find something that we can do to bring down housing prices, to make it affordable and attainable for our folks here in Aurora.
Aurora's affordability is one of the things that attracted us here, that somebody with a young family, a growing family, could afford to establish themselves. So it is something that needs to be addressed. A lot of people have asked whether or not they feel the council is a body who should be addressing that. Becky mentioned a lot of points that I think are really important among those fees that force us to confront some difficult issues. You know, tap fees, for example, for water. If you look at Aurora's Schedule VII, that gives you the menu of what those fees are. They give an example of a single-family home with three bathrooms, a five-eighths-inch meter in excess of $26,000 per home. Water is a very precious commodity, and to confront those issues is something that we're gonna have to do. And those prices and those fees factor into the sale of every single home. So the affordability issue, whether or not it is the rate of the average monthly income that the Department of Housing and Urban Development is established, people will also have their own varying definitions of what it means to be affordable. Of the developers and the builders that I've talked to, all we can-- many of them are actually excited to include affordable homes in their plans. The number-one roadblock for many of them is the city. They talk about permitting, they talk about planning and zoning. And I agree, it shouldn't be as difficult as it is to go through this process. One developer told me that he had an application in with the city for 70 weeks. He had his application returned to him because they didn't like the font. We can't do business that way. We can't. For a city of our size approaching 400,000 people, we cannot afford to neglect our business interests. We cannot afford to neglect our people who are coming here for that opportunity at a good life. Not to survive, but to actually thrive as well. I was very lucky to be able to buy my home where I live in South Aurora when I did. But at this point in time, I don't know if I would be able to afford it now. And so that pinch isn't partisan. That pinch is felt in the pocketbook of everybody who lives here. Now, I love Aurora. I've talked to you about how, you know, it's offered us a sense of stability, but that stability is becoming threatened. So whether or not people think that it should be the purview of the council, I do think that we need to examine it. I do think that it's still worth building market-rate properties as well, too. There are positive externalities to building market-rate properties. It affects our own properties, right? But we have to take a deep dive, a measured approach, to ensuring that people, again, are safe in their homes, safe in their jobs, and safe in their communities. If we house people, if they're taken care of-- I personally believe that that is correlated to a lot of the unfortunate things we see. So if we are promoting economic beneficence in terms of housing, I think we'll see a reduction in crime, property, violent or otherwise, and to really be able to showcase what kind of community Aurora can be. It's gonna require a lot of creativity, it's gonna require some innovativeness. But I think a lot of that comes about with some changes with planning and zoning. And we can do that. We can change the code. We can do things to make it easier to do business and build and create more inventory in Aurora.
Well, thank you both. And at this time, I would like to see if we have any questions from the audience. Scott will be bringing around a wireless mic, and I will go ahead and call folks out. So sir, you'll be first. And please introduce yourselves as you're asking your questions.
Yes, I'm Joe Decker. I represent Pioneer Hills, which is over off of Chambers and Parker. We have 277 units and a little over 500 eligible voters over there. And two questions, one for you, Allison. Who was invited that didn't show?
All of the candidates were invited. I did not have contact information for Hannah O'Gale until today. So she would've had to make it on a pretty tight crunch. Everybody else I reached out to based on the information that was on their websites. Dustin Zavonic declined. Danielle Trinsky did not respond. And then Adam Fung and Candace Bailey both had issues that came up today that they were not able to join.
Thank you. So my main concern, and you've talked a lot about safety. We have a wetlands area over there, which the homeless situation is completely out of hand. We have spent over $16,000 evicting homeless from the wetlands, which we've had to do twice at $8,000 each. We're getting no help from the city, we're getting no help from the police. We're getting no help at all. And we talk about safety. We've had lots of problems with people that are walking our path that goes through the wetlands, with homeless people that are coming up and begging to them, homeless people that are coming up plugging into their outlets, plugging into their water sources to gain water. And from what I understand, with the latest council vote, the mayor suggested that we not allow overnight camping anywhere in the city, both public and private. And yet, the city council, on a five-to-five vote, basically said, "We're not gonna accept that." And now it's delayed another six months. So my question is, actually for you, Allison, as well. What is going on with city council that you're not protecting our safety and you're not taking this homeless situation seriously?
So because we're during the candidate forum portion of the meeting, I'm gonna go ahead and let the candidates maybe talk about what their approach would be to that issue. And after we've finished the forum, I'll take general questions. And I have that written down. And I'm happy to clear up some misinformation that comes across in that question at that time about the process and what the mayor's proposal actually does and what city council is actually doing. But right now, I want to focus on the candidates since they did take the time to join us this evening. So I don't know if you want to direct a question toward them or just let them speak on homelessness as they will?
I don't think they speak on homelessness.
Okay. All right, so John, and then Becky.
Absolutely no doubt that there has to be something done about this problem. By profession, I am a professor of public administration and policy. In my field, this is something we would call a wicked problem, which the definition is a problem with no foreseeable end in sight. And that doesn't paint a great picture for the future. As a resident, I understand your frustrations. And I think the difficulty in this is that we're dealing with human lives. And I think we're also witnessing things that are regional in scope in terms of problems. It's not something that Aurora can do on its own, but it is something that Aurora should act upon, for sure. I want to be delicate when it comes with human lives, when they're at stake. I've driven down Parker where, you know, after the 2:25, it's 45 miles an hour. But I think if you've all driven on that road as well, too, you see that people sometimes go 65 or 75 in those encampments on the side of the road. It's frightening to think what might happen if somebody veers off the road. It's a disaster all around. And so I don't want us to conflate some of the issues around the homeless problem. Again, it's a zero-sum game. Something has to be done. But our constraints in terms of what's available is something that I think is hindering progress. As you mentioned now, that the vote failed in a tie, that it can be brought about again in six months, and it would be a new council at that point in time. The city has actually made a lot of strides in terms of transitionary alternatives for shelters, pallet homes, safe parking, which I'm not the biggest fan of because I don't think a car provides the type of security. Neither does a tent, to tell you the truth, or a box. It's dehumanizing. And I want people to be able to have a shred of dignity wherever they're relocated. Camping is already against the law on private property. The ban, I would like to see more in place that will place these people somewhere where they can get care or treatment that they need. I feel that sometimes folks who are experiencing homelessness are mischaracterized, that they're all druggies, that they're all drunks, that they're all mentally ill. There's no denying that there is some of that. There's actually a fair amount, a percentage. These things are measured in the city's point-of-contact surveys, they're measured in other social service surveys. But at the end of the day, there are many people who are affected by homelessness who don't want to be in that situation. If they don't have an address, how can they apply for a job? And so I believe that we need to do everything we can to work towards something at least temporary. You know, our Mile High Behavioral, Comitvis, Day Center, all these organizations that we've worked with in the past don't have the capacity to put the number of folks who are camped in the last point-of-contact survey up. So it's gonna require solutions regionally. I think Dr. Cog needs to get more involved in the regional council of governments. I think we need to work with our neighbors to ensure that this problem is something that is addressed humanely, but also one that gives you the sense of safety that it is that you want and that you need. There's some gray areas in terms of where they're accessing around your community. There are some areas that are public lands, and there are things that we can and can't do. But I will not deny that we absolutely have to do something about that. It's now permeating areas outside of the city. Maybe some of you read a news story recently about the Forest Service that is also dealing with folks who are homeless now going up into the mountains. And there are hazards with them living there as well, too. Federal government permits you to camp for 14 days, but people are exceeding that in excess. So the insidiousness of this problem isn't lost on me. I just do want people to realize that human lives are at stake. If we can do something humanely, and frankly swiftly, I think that we can start to make some progress in that area.
It's easy to armchair quarterback on what, if I had been on council, what I would have done. So I'm going to tell you, if I had been on council, what I would have done regarding the encampment initiative. Number one, I would have called it an encampment initiative or ordinance. I would have worked very, very closely with our mayor and our council members to look at solutions that involved our community of faith, that involved community leadership, and that involved those people that are affected by homelessness. It's an all-inclusive problem. It's not a one-size-fits-all. We have people that are homeless for very, very different reasons, and it's not as easy as finding one solution. But we must find ones. We have to find a solution. We've got private property, we've got public property that are all being affected. We also have to work with our law enforcement to find something that if we adopt an ordinance that addresses what to do with those that are in the encampments, it has to be enforceable. So my vote is yes. We need to do something. We need to do it really quicker than six months from now. But it needs to be something that is a partnership solution. And I believe that we have everybody that would like to see that done.
Thank you both. Gina. And then I think in the back, we also had a question from TJ. So Gina, from TJ. Or, yes, you still have a question? Okay, Gina.
I'm Gina Aberg. And Becky, when you spoke about incentives for developers, I'm wondering what you would think about incorporating green building, environmentally-friendly building incentives?
Both of you remember?
I attended a transportation meeting this morning, and it was hosted by our Aurora Chamber. It was people from the Colorado Department of Transportation encouraging for people to ride on toll roads. And somebody asked exactly the same question that you just asked. And they said, "With all the concern about being greener, how do you accomplish that?" And I was quite curious how this person would answer it. And he said, "When you are in a lane, an idling, your vehicle produces much more emission than when you are moving." Thought that was an interesting answer. But the point of that is, all of us are still figuring the whole climate, the development versus climate control, what we can do as far as initiatives. So specifically, you asked what kind of incentives can be given. There's a number of things, based upon the priority of your community. You can't give a monetary incentive to a developer that is looking to build something and add it as a green package. You also can encourage people through a code enforcement to add things that are green, that pay attention to things. Like if you're going to build an apartment complex, that you make sure that you have electric charging stations available to those tenants that may want something like that. So there's a number of things that we can do. I also want you to know that there are a number of things that the city already does. And I think that part of it is educating-- And I think that part of it is educating people on what is available, what can you do. I know that here in Heather Gardens, we do a lot of green work. And really, we look at it as a responsibility to our nuclear community. And I think that we easily can incorporate some of the same types of models in terms of incentives for cities. It's better incentive, it's better like the carrot than the stick.
I think incentives that help us reach sustainability goals are okay. I think when they overall increase the wellbeing, an acknowledgement that we do have issues that affect us in terms of climate pollution, carbon capture, things of that nature. And I agree with Becky, I think the city is doing certain things. Can we do more? Absolutely. Some of that's going to take some convincing voters most likely, depending if there are initiatives that come about. And that's good because people should have an input in that. But I do think that we are making such amazing advancements in terms of things like buildings that are LEED certified, those technologies that help us have those green buildings. It shouldn't be a should wait. It's a when, how, and let's find a way to do it. Again, I don't think it's a partisan issue. I think all of us love Colorado for, you know, the quality of life that's offered in terms of our natural resources and our spaces and the beauty. I think we want to preserve that. I think that we can preserve that in a growing city, right? The third largest in Colorado, we grow. We need to be mindful about those initiatives. And I think if we can incentivize builders to do that, to help protect us in certain ways, we should explore that.
Okay, I think we have time for, I'll let you introduce yourself.
I'm Teresa Legere. My question is more about what each one of you have done that connects you to this job or this Vion City Council outside of what you've done professionally? So I'd like to hear one or two things that each of you have done that you can draw on for experience then as a council member, the connection to understanding things that are at a deeper level, like bonding, like the licensing fees, like taxes, like all the things that happen in the city. But what life experience do you have? And it could be professional or volunteer. But what are you going to draw on to be a good council member? What makes you a good council candidate?
So we will have John and then Becky, right? That's reverse of what we just did. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that question. I think it's really important too, just given that ballot access is pretty easy. And now that the field has grown pretty large, to be able to distinguish oneself based on qualifications is a challenge in and of itself. Teresa, my first home was a single wide aluminum siding trailer in Arizona's mining country. My parents did not go to college. They were hardworking, blue collar folks that taught me everything I know about hard work. And that understanding before you as a PhD educated college professor is, in my opinion, nothing short of a miracle. And I tell you that story because I think it reflects just who I am as an individual, my grit, my desire to persevere. So I do think that my lived experience and my professional experience can lend itself a lot to council. My PhD is in public administration and policy. So these are things that I want to tackle head on. But I do think that there are other things that I've done in my life that also lend credibility to very tactile issues that we will have to do as council people. I've served on a number of boards and committees in the community. I continue to serve on the board of directors for Servicios de la Raza, which is one of the largest human service organizations in Colorado. I'm also on the board of directors for the Arapahoe County Foundation Incorporated and previously served on the Social Enterprise Alliance Colorado Chapter Board of Directors and the Colorado Children's Family Advisory Council. And in a couple of those instances, in particular with Servicios de la Raza and with Arapahoe County Foundation, I've had to uphold a fiduciary responsibility for large amounts of money. So being able to handle a budget, I think, is something that's very important. You know, more interpersonally, I'm a person who values relationships. I believe that when you meet people where they are and build those relationships, you build relationships of trust. And when you build those relationships of trust, you can deescalate a lot of the tensions that we've been seeing lately. I think that that's something that I want to do to bring a semblance of civility and professionalism back to City Hall, back to that city council days. And additionally, last year, I served as a co-chair of the university's Equity Task Force. The chancellor asked me and one of my colleagues in the School of Education and Human Development to basically do an equity audit with the university in terms of how are we doing in providing people the right opportunities to grow, to be included. And I'm very proud of the fact that we were able to secure a multimillion dollar investment in those initiatives. And so being able to make big asks like that, to ask people to trust you and to be dealing with a lot of public funds, I think is something that has given me a skill set that I couldn't have gotten in my lived experience or my professional experience. And even though that was a function of my profession, it was something that was done, you know, out of an ask of the chancellor of the university. But I think that's great. I think that we have a whole host of candidates that bring a lot of different skills. And that's good because I think a good amalgam of all those skills can probably produce some good results for the city. Thank you for that question.
How many people understand how a city works? I would say a few of you, not quite as many as that I would hope for years from now. I understand how a city works. I've worked for cities and I've worked with cities. And each city has its own characteristic, but they all kind of work the same way. In order for you to be able to achieve success in four years, which is frankly a short period of time, you need to understand how cities work. I've spent three decades finding how a city works. As far as my attachment to this community, I've talked about my love and my commitment to the city of Aurora. Let me talk to you a little bit about my volunteer work. I have found great joy in the last 19 years volunteering on all kinds of different levels with all kinds of different people. I currently serve as the chair of the Aurora Sister City Career Committee. And we've done a number of things regarding exchange programs, particularly for our youth. And I say this because I believe if you teach your children young to love another country and love another people, that they will carry that with them the rest of their lives. And as they grow, they will value cultures and races and people that are different than they are. I love to bake. If you live in my building, you know it's just my thing. I have the opportunity in January, with the help of my friends and with the help of my neighbor, to make 1,200 desserts for the Brother Jeff Project. I have been volunteering at food banks. I have been volunteering at COVID clinics, not because I have to, but because I love this community. I think that one of the biggest things that I have learned walking and knocking on doors is how different we are one to another and yet how much we are the same. There are folks that are all different colors, speaking all different languages, that reside in our community and that call Aurora home. And proudly so, by the way. Those are the people that I want to hear from. Those are the voices that I will continue to reach out to. John and I agree, relationship building and communication is key to being an excellent council member. It's not our voices anymore. It's yours that need to be heard and implemented in our city.
Thank you both. And I think we have time for probably two more questions. We can go to more. I see we have about at least five. So I think you raise your hand first, man, and then we'll come back around.
This question would be for John. And probably Becky may have a comment on it, but it's from quotes I think I understood you saying. I would like to understand more detail. You mentioned in your opening something about revamping City Hall and restoring public agencies. Can you go into a little more detail about how you envision that working, please?
Becky, if you also have time?
I think the language I used was administrative reform. I've been saying it so much, I think people are going to get tired of it and maybe put it on a T-shirt. I don't know. But, you know, I've spent the better part of the last decade in my career educating public servants throughout Colorado and beyond. Even former council member Nicole Johnson is a former student. And I think in a lot of circles, people say those who can't teach. And I take a lot of umbrage to that because I teach and I work in a very applied profession. I teach around the areas of public service leadership and ethics. I teach management, I teach policy. And I feel that Aurora is at a point in time where they're ready to turn a corner. A lot of people are unaware of this. And when I mention it, I like the reactions. We're bigger in population than four football markets, Pittsburgh, Cleveland, Cincinnati, and New Orleans. Aurora, Colorado is bigger than all of those cities. And I think it's time for us to grow up a little bit. I think that in order for us to best serve residents, you, it's time for us to get more up to date. It's time for us to innovate a little bit in the way that we operate the City Hall. I'm not necessarily positing that the city council needs a raise, but a lot of people have asked me what I think about a full-time council as well. I can tell you this, if you pay part-time wages and part-time hours, you get part-time results. And Aurora is too big. You know, we're going to rival the population of Colorado Springs within the decade. My kids and grandkids will see Aurora become the largest city in the state. So that infrastructure that I mentioned beforehand is something that has to come about with some of those administrative reforms. And council member Coombs can correct me on this if I'm wrong, but with 10 council members plus a mayor, I believe you're supported by two administrative staff?
The mayor has one and the rest of us have three altogether across all categories.
Yeah, so that just, so council member Coombs said that the mayor has an administrative person and that there are three divided among the 10. Is that correct? Yeah, that's not enough. I think that every council person needs to have somebody who can help them with call volume, responses, policy issues. We don't have that. We're putting a lot on the shoulders of people who are doing this part-time, who are working full-time jobs elsewhere. And it's not going to get the results that we need. So I would like us to not only find ways, and maybe they don't deal directly with council, maybe we focus on administrative staff first. Maybe we start an interim program for crime to get young people excited about local government and just additional assistance to help the council people do what they were duly elected to do. I also think that many of the administrative divisions at the city need, we need to let leaders lead. So I want the city manager, the chief of police, the fire chief, all of these people who oversee these administrative divisions be able to lead without fear of retribution. I want them to be able to build good cultures where the city of Aurora is a great place to work. I want to see some autonomy. That if people have good ideas, they're not shot down, but they're thought about and brought about if there's something that can create good things for our residents and for the city operationally. I feel like I'm being a little loquacious here. So does that answer your question in terms of sort of a greater vision I'm hoping for in terms of modernizing and getting us to be that responsive nimble government I believe is to be as a big city?
I think so.
Okay, thank you.
It might be easier for me to give you an example. Let's talk about land development because it's an expertise that I have and it's a background that I have. Right now, our land development process is not working. Question number one, is that a systemic problem or is that a people problem? Or is it both? We need to understand what processes are not working and how we can improve them. Because right now, our process is failing our community. And it's affecting the sustainability and the economics of our community. So it's something that we need to fix. We need to look at it, we need to say, to understand what it is that needs to be fixed and then implement the process. I'm a proponent of putting pressure on something, having that pressure be persistent and consistent, not to break something, not to move it in a pendulum manner, but actually to get it, to write it, if you will. 10 years ago, the city of Aurora undertook an ideology called Core Four and it was values that the city had, four core values for customer service. I would guarantee you that many of our employees are not aware of those values anymore. And it has affected how we deal and communicate with people. We can do a much better job in terms of communicating what it is that the city expects and what our customers expect from us. And then just literally do that.
All right, so then Dolan, and then we'll, we've got to pick two here. So Dolan, you got a question?
Can you hold this for me? Sure. Yeah, so the minimum wage is at $12.32 an hour pegged to inflation. So as inflation goes up as a percentage, the minimum wage goes up with it as a percentage, $12.32 an hour in Aurora, Colorado. Simple question, do you think the minimum wage right now, right now, should be $12.32 an hour pegged to inflation? If not, what should it be right now?
I think Becky, you went second last time. So if you want to go first, Samantha?
Hello, Dolan. Dolan's been calling me and I have not met him in person, so it's a pleasure to meet you. Do I think the minimum wage needs to be raised? I do think that that's something that we need to tackle in balance with the effect that it has on business. Here's the deal, the minimum wage is set in the city of Aurora, as you had indicated. It doesn't mean that that's the average minimum wage in Aurora. Many of our small businesses exceed that minimum wage. Do I think that it needs to be raised? It is being raised. If you do not know, the last time the city council looked at raising minimum wage, it built in increments for minimum wage to raise. We have seen during this pandemic, small businesses compete and they're actually raising our wages here for individuals here in the city of Aurora. We cannot raise the minimum wage so that people start basically laying off people. It doesn't make sense. It's not the right way to approach it.
Complex answer to a complex question. Nominally, in general, do I believe that the minimum wage should be raised? Yes, but there are a lot of layers on that. A lot of different sized businesses that this would affect in different ways. I think Aurora has been such a hallmark of small business and a small business success. I've seen small business owners struggle, but I've seen small business owners go above and beyond what the mandated federal minimum wage is, what the mandated state and city minimum wage is. And I applaud them. I applaud them for paying their employees what they're worth. I would like that of every business entity that operates in the city of Aurora, to pay their employees what they're worth. The minimum wage as it is now, no individual who works between 36 and 40 hours a week can live comfortably in Aurora. Maybe not even uncomfortably in Aurora at that rate. So I believe that if the city is to engage to revisit minimum wage ordinance, that it has to be deeply and carefully engaged in the stakeholder process. That council needs to listen to subject matter experts who are deeply involved in small business handling a large business and to understand what the ramifications would be of a sweeping minimum wage ordinance. I believe that people deserve dignity. I believe that people deserve to live well and to be able to breathe and to not stress and to not, you know, work six to two serving food at a school and then driving Uber, you know, for the next eight hours. work six to two serving food at a school and then driving Uber, you know, for the next eight hours. It's not a way for people to live. But I think if we have careful deliberate conversations, we can hopefully not just move the needle, but actually have something with teeth that will allow people to find jobs that pay them what they're worth.
Thank you, so sir, so sir?
My name is Kevin. You both talk a lot like politicians, and I'm not sure that's a good thing. When you talked about homeless, everything was very uncertain. You know, round everybody up, put them in a tent, in a camp. The ones that wanted to stay there, you let stay there out on Eastern Plain somewhere. Those who want services, you take them down to the city and you get them the services. I mean, you can talk all around it, do something. Becky, you mentioned something about a carrot and a stick, and yeah, that's a real nice analogy. All the carrot does is forget that the guy holding it is holding a stick. We're still being coerced, whether it's a carrot or whether it's a stick. As far as minimum wages go, they're meant to be a starting job for people. If you are thirty or forty years old and you're working minimum wage, you didn't pay attention in school and you don't deserve to make any more than that because that's all your worth to society.
Is there a question?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I guess I'd like to know where the two conservative members are because, to be honest with you, there's nobody in this room I would look for.
Okay, they chose not to come, so we'll have to follow up with them about that choice. Wendy?
Oh, that's okay, my voice is loud enough, I think.
I think it's better just for the video.
Oh, okay. That's what I was gonna say, as a teacher, I've learned to shout on the playground.
My question has to do with going back to the relationship right now between the police and the general public, a matter of mistrust. The climate is not good right now. And just recently, I saw something on TV with regards to Baltimore and the fact that Baltimore apparently for the last number of years has had the highest crime rate of any city in the United States. And they've developed a program where the police are actually going out and spending time recreationally with the younger generations. I'm wondering about that kind of a program here. Certainly, we could use that, of course, I know we could also use more police right now under the circumstances, but what are your feelings with regards to developing something like that for our community?
John, and then Becky?
I think being in community is critical. I think it was just a week ago or so, Becky, you can remind me because you were there as well, Families Forward held a back-to-school event on the Great Lawn in the municipal center. And I took great joy in watching Chief Wilson play soccer with one of the young youth, right? There was a police presence there, they were engaging with the youth. And I think being able to show them the original intent of what these uniformed personnel signed up for, the oath that they swore, is good. Because I know for myself, and it might be a generational issue, I was taught to respect police, I was taught to respect authority, but I know that things have changed. I know, as I mentioned before, that there are tensions that need to be addressed. We are short, short-staffed. I've talked to Chief Wilson, I've talked to Deputy Chief Parker. They've all but shuttered some of their special operations so that these officers and sergeants can be out on other patrols. Firefighters have talked about how difficult it's been for them to call for backup when they need law enforcement, the wait times that they have if something's happened. So it puts us in a very difficult position where we recognize the need for public safety. We recognize the need to support these people in, again, the oath that they swore, to serve and protect. But I do think that the efforts that have been undertaken, I know that the chief, ABD, has hired Claudine McDonald to work around community relations. This is becoming an issue with the New Way program that City Manager Jim Twombly just mentioned today as a result of the grand jury indictments. And I think we need to demonstrate, again, when I mentioned, when I referenced the issue with the homeless population, with their humans. Police officers are humans too, I acknowledge that. I acknowledge that they put their lives on the lines for us. I acknowledge that they take in a lot of heat. Some of it is warranted, some of it is not, I'm comfortable saying that. But I think, and I've seen a lot of our public service officials try and bridge that gap to say, "Look, we wanna root out corruption, we want accountability, we want responsibility, but we also wanna know that you were valued members of our community, who we're trusting still to keep us safe." And I think if they're willing to humanize themselves, like Chief Wilson did, that young man, you know, on the soccer field, that's just, it's a tiny thing. I realize it is an observation one, that we need to scale that up big time. I think that that can be a good thing. I've seen those heartwarming videos of officers playing pickup basketball, I've seen things like that. And I've seen, you know, other public service agencies work hard to demonstrate what a rewarding career law enforcement, environment, rescue can be. And so I think we need to double down on those efforts, to reinvest in the community, to be a part of community, to be in community and demonstrate that we can work towards progress in this area.
Practically speaking, let me give you an example of what I think that we could do. First of all, the chief of police also has what she calls a youth commission. So she hears from a group of young people on a regular basis what they need from the community. When I was young, people wanted to be policemen or firemen. You could get a costume anytime to be a policeman and a fireman, and it is a difficult taxing job now. But they need help, so let's talk about some of the practical ways that they could help. The police have already undertaken a project in which they will have a mental health provider partner with a police officer and go out on a call. And the mental health provider, they are able to assess the condition of someone because they have the tools to do so, to interact with that person so that it is not an immediate confrontation. The police officer is there as backup to serve and to protect. So it's a way of expanding public safety services in our community. There are a number of ways that we could do that. I know that there are programs that we used to have coffee with a cop. We can have retired police officers come back and talk about the joys of being a police officer and some of the benefits of having safety in your community. So we can build our department and allow our police and our fire to continue doing the job that they need to do to serve and to protect. So I think that, again, there's a number of things that can be done on a very practical scale that frankly don't cost that much and it gets public safety back out in the community. I think bottom line is that we also need to close the gap. Our gap has grown between the trust of community and any kind of authority. I don't care if you're a boss at work or the chief of police. And we need to find tools and communication that lessens that gap because that's going to lessen pressure. And as pressure is lessened, people are not going to be as angry or as volatile, which creates the circle of needing more police.
Thank you both again, and in the interest of time, we'll go ahead and move on to closing statements. So we'll start with Becky and then after, wait, in our opening statements, you went first, so we'll let John go and then Becky.
So thank you all very much for taking the time to be here. As I said at the beginning, Aurora is a big city with big city issues and I'm ready to confront that with big city vision. This race is pivotal. We have seen the dynamics of the council change over the past several years and I think it's time for us to restore semblance of stability to that days. I think it's time that we dig deep with our policy problems. I think that it's time that we confront the fact that we have a lot to offer. I wanna ask you, as I close, to think about the past five news stories you've heard about Aurora. Are they positive? Probably not. But we live here, we see the good that it has to offer and I think that this city and its residents are worth working for, to find positive changes, to find the changes that are needed to move us past the status quo, to have those tough conversations that will allow us to grow as a city and to offer everybody who lives here a true shot. And for lack of better words, the American dream. Aurora is a microcosm of the United States. Our diversity is amazing, the number of cuisines, the number of languages spoken. We have a lot of good things to offer, but that doesn't deny the fact that we have severe challenges that await us. I'm here again with my lived experience, with my tactile training, with my service in the community, ready to work on your behalf. None of this is gonna be easy, but I believe that the city of Aurora is worth it. I would ask that you take the time to maybe take a piece of my literature, to go to my website, johnroquieu.com. It's a long Spanish surname, so if you, I take a piece with you so you know how to spell it when you put it in the search handle. See if my platform is something that you can get behind. Have a conversation with me, reach out. I'm happy to stick around and have these conversations because I'm ready to meet you where you are. Just because I have an idea of where certain things are, doesn't mean that I'm gonna be obtuse to the way you might see certain things. I'm gonna listen, I'm ready to listen, I'm ready to go to work. Thanks again for your time, again, John Roque, I'm running for City Council of Larch.
I bring a skill set that's needed on our current city council. It's not a brag, it really is a fact. Building a city council is much like building any kind of team. The team needs to work together, they need to represent diversity, they need to be able to communicate with one another to work effectively and efficiently on your behalf. We're losing some of the skill sets from our existing city council. They are choosing either not to run or rerun, or they are being turned out with that vacancy, particularly in areas like land development. You're not going to find a better candidate to fill that spot. I'm a community volunteer, serving my city. I've got a track record of being successful at that. I'm a commissioner on planning and zoning commission, so I'm already filling a gap that is needed in an area that we as a city council can improve upon. I'm committed to respect your voices, not my own. I think that often leaders in any city get caught up in being theirs, it's their voice, it's their desire, it's what they want. It's not, it's never been so. It is truly about what our community wants. If elected, I'd be the first Asian on Aurora City Council. Look at the diversity in your community. Can you believe that there's never been a person of my color serving on our city? If elected, I do commit today and this day forward to speak on your behalf, to be accessible to you, to hear what you have to say, to learn from you, to have those critical conversations that are sometimes not so comfortable. I'm Becky Hogan, I'm running for Aurora City Council. My website is HoganForOneAurora, all spelled out. I too have literature and a business card, so it's real easy to track me, to find me. Please add me. For those of you that are on social media, and I look at this crowd and believe you me, I know a lot of you are on social media. So I would encourage you to go and follow what is going on in your city. Follow me and you can see who I am and what I believe in my everyday life. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you, Councilmember Coombs, for hosting this. I am looking forward to you answering one of the questions on your behalf. So I'm not gonna let you go on that one. But thank you again and thank you for taking this time to attend this evening. Important election, November 2nd. Seven people are running, two seats are available. I'm asking that you vote for me.
I can't stop these folks around the boss for going much longer than they came here expecting to go. So thank you so much. And really appreciate all of you for coming with your questions. They were really thoughtful and I will go back to the question that was asked of me. I'm gonna leave a tiny bit of time at the end, if Barb Schnell, are you still here? You're still here, okay, to give a report on the Commission for Seniors, but I will answer the questions that were asked of me first by Mr. Becker? Correct? Decker, sorry, I wrote Becker. We have met before, so I apologize for getting it wrong. So I wanna be clear kind of about what you said the mayor's ban would do because you said that it would ban all overnight camping in the city. And that is not correct. It would ban unsanctioned camping in private or public land. And it would allow the city to enforce that with permission on private land as well as on public city land. What it would not do, and I think this is really crucial because this covers almost all of the encampments we see in the city, is allow Aurora police or other staff to enforce on CDOT land or Arapahoe County land, or XL Energy land, or Army Corps of Engineers land without completely footing the bill for those other agencies. Those other agencies have told the city. You can do that, I guess, but we're not gonna give you any money to clean up our highways or these other places that folks are. And so, and it costs a lot of money to clean up these encampments. And it costs a lot of money to, if people refuse to leave, give them trespassing tickets or refusal to obey lawful order tickets and then maybe have them end up in court, or maybe not. And if they do not end up in court, get a warrant for their arrest and be in the Arapahoe County Jail, which costs about forty thousand dollars a year to house each person in the Arapahoe County Jail. And so, and the other component of the mayor's proposal is that it would require that we have somewhere for people to go, a place for them to go when they leave the encampment. And we do not have that and we won't be able to stand that up for, it would probably take at least six months if we dedicated all of the money that it would take. And it takes about one point two million dollars per year per site and each of those sites can hold about forty people. So if we put most of our ARPA money toward it and all agreed on how it would look, then it would still take us six months. So you would still be left footing the bill as Pioneer Hills for that entire six months that we have until we can talk about it again. So there are a number of things that we are doing. Becky mentioned communities of faith. We have a community of faith that already has a safe parking initiative there and they are willing to also do an RV parking initiative, which we're working on them on how to make sure that there's proper sanitation to dump RV waste so that that's not getting dumped inappropriately into our stormwater. And they're also willing to host a pallet home site, which John mentioned, which are places that can be heated, unlike tents, that can be cleaned out and that we can make sure that there's case management and other services there. So that's one thing that is currently underway, that we can start getting some folks there ASAP. We're hoping to use the ARPA funds to get that done before it gets cold because when people are out in the cold, that's really dangerous for them as well. We don't want folks to be out in the cold. But what we did last winter with the warehouse for folks to stand as an emergency cold weather shelter with the six-foot social distancing, which is still required, we don't have that space available now and our day resource center doesn't hold enough people. So just our day resource center as a cold weather shelter plus our existing shelter is not enough, but that's why we're working on pallet homes, RV, safe RV camping. And these are things that will happen successively within those months. So within the six months, by the time the mayor has brought this back up, we actually will have a lot of these things up and running as long as at least six members of council agree to use our American Rescue Plan Act funds to start engaging in those processes. The other things we're looking at are intergovernmental agreements. I had a meeting with staff today and another council member about can we look at intergovernmental agreements with CDOT, with XL, with the Corps of Engineers, with these other entities where they will agree that if they don't clean something up, if there's waste and other things left over from people leaving a camp and they don't clean it up within a certain amount of time, that we're gonna do it and charge them. And have that be an agreement that we have ahead of time. So that when people do leave these camps behind, which they often do, the waste is not left. And then another conversation that has been raised to me and that I have asked staff to look into is can we say that there are places that people can be that aren't these 1.2 million dollar sanctioned camping sites? Can we say, you can't be by the highway, you can't be in the wetlands, that's a very bad place for people to be for a lot of reasons. Not just for recreational purposes, but also water quality reasons. Those wetlands in your neighborhood are a water quality improvement. And the Cherry Creek water and the Cherry Creek reservoir water need those wetlands to not be polluted. So for that reason, they also should not be in those wetlands. And for their own safety, for flood mitigation purposes, they shouldn't be in those wetlands because if we have a flood, that's potentially harmful to them. So there are a lot of those kinds of places that people are because it's very hard to enforce them not being there. Either because the city has no jurisdiction or because your HOA has to spend so much money making it happen that it's prohibited.